This time we'll open our actual work session, Matt, a meeting for Monday, May the 18th, 2020. First thing on the agenda tonight is a closed meeting, and I'd like to hear somebody give me a motion to go into closed meeting. Someone take us into our closed meeting, please.
Mayor?
Yep.
I move the town council go in the closed meeting for the purpose of consideration of interviews of prospective candidates for employment with the town pursuant to section 2.2-3711.8.1 of the Code of Virginia.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And we got a motion on the floor in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 James, Mr. Mayor, would you like me to do the roll call for you?
I'd like to, yeah, but I didn't know you were there.
I'm here, yes. Councilman Gillespie?
Here, thank you.
You support the motion? Uh, Councilman Thompson?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Councilman Seelock?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell? And Mayor Tewol?
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. I'd like your motion to come out of closed meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the mayor and council certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, as recognized by each mayor and council members affirming a vote, that only such public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, as were identified in the motion by which closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting by the mayor and council, and that the vote of each individual member of mayor and council be taken by roll call and recorded and included in the minutes of the meeting of the mayor and town council.
Have a second. Do we have a second? Okay. Have a motion in a second, then have a roll call, please.
Mayor Tewol?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seelock?
His mic is muted. Would you like me to unmute it?
Maybe.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, please. Bill, are you there, buddy? He is currently unmuted. Oh, he re-muted himself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Here.
Councilman Cockrell?
Here.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Here.
Councilman Thompson?
Here.
Okay, we supposed to say okay or oh, yes on that motion?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay. I think everybody just knew, didn't?
Yes.
But that's okay. I think we're okay. All right, the next item tonight is number two, the tourism research and options for consideration. Matt, we turn it over to you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. We are fortunate to have Ms. Carrie Barnhart on the line who who's on the joint tourism board, and she has a presentation that the committee has worked through that she would like to present to the council. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Barnhart.
Um, yes, hi. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and town council members. I just want to start out by giving a little bit of an introduction of who I am. I'm actually the vice chair of the Front Royal Warren County Joint Tourism Advisory Committee. I've been on the committee more than two years now, and tonight I am representing that committee in providing this presentation regarding some research and some options for organizational structure for you to consider. Um, a little bit more about my background, I am also the president of Vibe Properties. Vibe Properties has invested heavily in the town of Front Royal, and we have 10 tenants actually on Main Street, six of which are heavily dependent on tourism. I am also the president and lead the day-to-day operations and with my husband, the majority owner of Front Royal Brewing Company, so you'll see me there often. And a little bit more of my background that might be relevant tonight is that I have a 35-year career as an organizational consultant to Fortune 50 companies in the areas of strategy, transformation, and organizational design. So I'm going to go through the the presentation tonight, and if you have clarifying questions, you can stop me, and then we can open up for more of a discussion at the end. I also wanted to make a point that I did spend some time with the visitor center. That was a question about who had on the joint tourism advisory committee had spent time with them. A couple of months back, I spent quite a bit of time with Megan and Tim from the visitor center, so and several hours, and have researched the functions of the visitor center and know quite a bit about them based on my two years on the joint tourism committee, so I wanted to mention that as well. All right, we can go to the next slide. So the question that we were posed, was posed to us was how should tourism proceed? There's been a significant change in tourism, and the joint tourism committee was asked, you know, what were our opinions about it? This presentation is not going to be about our opinions about exactly what you should do structurally. That is really up to you and to the county. It is a joint question between the both of you. It is a leadership question and not for us as an advisory committee, but we did do the staff work to give you all the options and have you think more specifically about these things. And so the short-term objectives here are really about change. How do we go forward from where we are? We need to determine a structure that provides direction, leadership, and positive tourism growth, and create a long-term plan with budget metrics and oversight responsibilities. So that is the work of both the town council and the work of the of the county, and and also of the advisory committee in an advisory capacity. The next slide, next slide. So one of the questions, you know, a basic question is what is tourism? And really tourism is about people coming here. So sometimes there's a confusion about whether tourism is community development or community activities, but really we're talking about tourism based on those who are coming here. I mean, you can be a tourist in your own town, but we're really talking about those coming from the outside, and then as you see, making use of commercial provision of services. So it brings revenue to the town, it brings revenue to the businesses in the town, and it is really an industry. And I did some research to find out how large an industry it is, and so there's, I didn't find the exact ranking of the industry. That's probably possible, and somebody I'm sure will find that, but it brings in over $151 million in revenue, $34 million in payroll, and 1,700 jobs, and that's in 2018, and it's growing at about 4% a year. So as you can see, it's a very important industry in our town, and as all big industries, you know, we worry about its impact, particularly now as things change with the COVID-19, and you know, also with the leadership changes that we have. So it's a very important topic. Go to the next page. So what do we have to offer? And this is in Warren County and the town of Front Royal. Really, the reason why my husband and I moved here, why we invested so heavily here, is because it's an amazing place. It has incredible natural assets, you know, state parks, it has the hiking, it has rafting, it has climbing, it has golf courses, a historic town, it has just unbelievable, you know, jewels that we have here that that are great to enjoy and a great place to live, beautiful scenery and so forth. So it's why we're here, it's why we feel so passionate about it, it's why I joined the tourism committee. As I mentioned, now more than ever, we have to really think about tourism. We have individuals who have been quarantined all over the country for a long time now and are looking for someplace to go, and particularly those in Northern Virginia, in Washington DC, in the Philadelphia area, in West Virginia, are looking to go to someplace that is close and safe and open, and we have this great opportunity, not just a normal opportunity, but even a bigger opportunity. So when it's safe to come here, which depending on, you know, how you look at it, might be for a little, it might take a little while yet, we're going to be ready to open. But really, this this presentation is about the broader opportunity here, and if you think about all the the great places to visit in the country, we want to be listed right up there in the top 10. And so we have to have a vision that that lets us, you know, show the great things that are here, lets us build great opportunity in the town, and lets us be proud of what we have here. Any questions, but so far? Okay, I'll get into the current situation. So what some people, and I've been listening to a lot of the tourism presentations and know about the concerns, and what some people don't realize is that we are required to spend money on tourism as a town and as a county. So the way the regulations in Virginia are aligned is that we, 60% of lodging tax for the county, and so in Warren County, that lodging tax in 2019 was $195,000, and 70% of the lodging tax for the town, and it's just the way, it's different because of the way the numbers worked out, but town of Front Royal lodging tax in 2019 was $190,000. So 70 and 60%, if you do the math, it's about in 2019, it's about $247,000 that must be used for tourism. So there, I think there's been some concerns that we cut all the tourism dollars, but we really can't because that lodging tax needs to go to tourism. And if you looked at the definition of what tourism is, it's those those things that support those outsiders to come in and enjoy our town, and also bring great revenue and help our businesses in our town. So so traditionally, and this next year coming up, the town and the county have put extra dollars towards tourism. In 2020, 2021, the tourism budget for the town is $225,000 in their line item, and for the county is $200,000. So $425,000 combined. It seems like a lot of money, but it can go very quickly based on the type of activities that you need to do for tourism, because you're making really everyone, not only the country, in the country, but also even places around the world know about you. So the question is, how do you use those dollars smartly? How do you target what you need to target? What is your vision and how do you align that? So it is, it is, you know, $425,000 is a lot of money, we just have to be smart about it, because it could go very quickly. The county and the town have separate budgets. Also, that's not always known that they are separate, and separate processes for tourism, but are connected through the joint tourism committee. Also, the visitor center provides services to Warren County as well, and some of the services in the town of Front Royal provide services to Warren County as well, but they are separate and they do different activities. In January 2020, and I think everybody knows this, the town of Front Royal removed the director of tourism, leaving a void in structure and leadership. That continues to be avoid today, and there really needs to be something to address that. So that's what part of this presentation is about. Additionally, the Front Royal Tourism Department employs 3.6 paid FTE, full-time equivalents dedicated to tourism, and obtains assistance from two to eight part-time volunteers, depending on seasonality. Staff operate out of the visitor center located on Main Street, and in the picture there, you'll see a picture of the visitor center. The visitor center is a certified tourist information center by the Virginia Tourism Commission. It's typically open 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, seven days a week, and one of the reasons why it has that schedule is because the Virginia Tourism Commission requires a certain amount of hours and accessibility to the visitor center. There are also other things that they need, criteria that they need to meet, but the visitor center is certified, so that's an important thing to them. Next page. So another question that came up is, you know, who is this joint tourism advisory board? The advisory, it's actually a committee versus a board, but the advisory committee has been in place for a couple of years. It is a local tourism industry organization, which is in the Code of Virginia, so it's people who are involved in those tourist dollars. It is, and as you can see, their responsibilities are really to promote tourism, and the membership, it's nine members, and it's through an agreement that this was constructed, nine members, the Front Royal Director of Community Development and Tourism, which we don't have right now, which the town manager, having the mayor manager, is playing in that role to some degree, and the Warren County Planning Director, who still participates on the board, the president of the Front Royal Warren County Chamber of Commerce, and the Chamber of Commerce is typically required in a structure like this for a tourism advisory committee, and then the remaining six members are representatives of the, both the lodging, of the lodging properties, and also of those town businesses that that are involved in tourism. The officers right now, current chair is Katie Tewell, I am the vice chair, and the current secretary is Taryn Logan from the county. Okay, so these are recommendations, but they're very broad recommendations, and then structural options, so we can flip to that. So really, the biggest recommendation of all is to have a vision for tourism. So if you were to ask, you know, several individuals from the town, from the county, from the businesses, you know, what should tourism be? There are varying ideas, but there's really not a broad vision for tourism. What do we want to be? What, who are we trying to attract? Where are we going with this? Where should we spend their money? There's a lot of different opinions, and I don't think that there's a lot of consensus on that, except we need to be, you know, highlight what we have. And so that's one of the, the broadest recommendation is really do some work and get a vision of tourism that people can get really excited about. The other objectives here, and these are broad objectives, are to look at the customer experience. I just talked about the targeted customer, but who are they? And so is it that person from Northern Virginia, or is it people from Europe? Is it people from across the country? With very limited dollars, we really need to know the tiers of people who we are targeting, and the experience they want, and what we have to offer, and the economic potential of that. So we haven't, we have not done a lot of measurement around that. We've done some, but it really requires more than your staff. It really requires you as leaders to say, this is the vision that we're getting behind, these are, you know, this is what we wanted to bring in from an economic potential, and to be, to get very involved in that. Metrics, while there are some metrics, really, our metrics, when you compare them to other areas, are weaker in that they, they're not really, individuals are not really told exactly what the metrics we're trying to meet, and are not held accountable, and they're not visible, and they're not visible to the public. So while individuals may track metrics and care about them, the leadership is not always knows, doesn't always know what the metrics are, nor have asked for certain type of performance. So what we're saying is to really think about what the return on investment is that you're looking for, understand what you're asking individuals for, and then making sure that that the individuals know what they are and are following through on the metrics. And I'll talk a little bit more deeply about metrics and what those could potentially look like. Social platforms, shift from a dependence on print advertising to online social media. Does it mean that print advertising goes away? No, it's very important that you're always going to have the print advertising, like the brochures, there are individuals who like that, but but social media potentially could give you a bigger bang for your buck. So to include the paid ads, to do things like geo-targeting, sometimes called geo-fencing, where you come into a town and something will pop up on your phone and saying, welcome to Front Royal, here's a list of our businesses, here's a list of our activities. Higher use of video and original content, which again takes some investment, it takes some focus in resources to get original content, but it really, in this game of social media, content is king, and so it really is about getting some original content. And again, this is tourism content versus community content, so which takes quite a bit of investment. Analytics, improve SEO and track and report on online positioning, Google Analytics, track and report on social media metrics, and this is not only for the staff, but there should be some benchmarks and some performance requirements of your staff to, that you are holding them accountable for. So it takes a little bit of research on your part to understand what you want to have happen for your tourism group. Sustainability, this is very big in areas like us, so we have immense natural resources here. When you bring individuals to see those natural resources, one of the things that becomes very important very quickly is how to keep them intact. So how to create sustainable tourism so that visitors are not wrecking your natural resources, because those are your greatest assets. So it is about educating, it's about putting things in place to do that, it's about making people aware that we care about those things. It's actually great for marketing as well, because people care about the sustainability of our natural resources just in general. Resources, leverage, and this is an interesting one, and pretty big change here, but leverage the combined funding and resources of the town and county to get the biggest bang for the buck, and reduce redundancy in competing messages. So while we were doing things separately with just this loose connection of the committee, what we're saying is whatever you do going forward is for the town and the county to come together and and create a one budget, one, one effort, and to move forward in something that may for the whole area, because it really is one, and it's the same thing that we are trying to promote. There are examples that we have in terms of things that, you know, created redundancy and mixed messaging, and so we need to really think about that, and think about brand, and think about the vision of the whole area. Ambassadorship, increase ambassadorship, volunteerism, and local business engagement. There are plenty of people in this town that feel like I do, that want to see this town succeed, this county succeed in bringing, you know, tourism in, in a responsible way, and are very proud of this area, and would love to help out. And so it's really tapping into those resources. And there are other individuals in this town that don't know all the assets that we have, or in the county that don't know all the assets we have. So it's educating those individuals, particularly those frontline individuals, like the servers and bartenders and shop owners, and those people at the convenience, convenience stores that where people are stopping for gas, and it's really to have one message in the town. So when you ask the question, what is there to do around here, someone doesn't say, oh, beats me, or really nothing. There is something that they can say about what we offer. And then the last piece, which might be a little surprising for some people, is is to leverage the Front Royal as a brand. And the reason for this is if you think about some of the places across the country, tourist destinations across the country, they have a brand, so it isn't, you know, a county brand and a town brand, they pick one brand. So it could be either, either or, but what we think, Front Royal makes sense as a brand for a couple of reasons. One, if you are coming from the Washington DC or Northern Virginia, or even off of 81, you see the sign that says Front Royal. In fact, every exit that you can on 66, you know, says Front Royal in this direction, because it is the most, it's the furthest point west on 66. So that's great advertising right there. We need to connect that advertising with a brand about tourism and and just this regional tourism. The second is if you think about, you know, places like Sedona and Asheville and Moab, Utah, and Denver, and Chicago, and you think about the places they have, you're not thinking about both their county and their city, or their county and their town, you're thinking about one name, and so what is our one name that we're looking at? In some cases, the county is more important, the name, the county is more important than the town in terms of branding. So if you think of a place like Sonoma, California, where there are many towns, many small towns within that county, and and you're going there for wine tourism, and they have all of those things connected together, you would pick the county as the name, but that that has to be decided so that we can put the most effort in terms of branding, and we don't have competing resources. The general recommendations on the function, so you know, my background being an organizational design person, we look at function, if you look at the work first, it's not, we don't look at the people first, we look at the work. And so what is the work of tourism? And so there's, there are main buckets here, and there's lots of sub-buckets, but the main buckets are the work of strategy planning and budgeting. Someone or something has to do that work. There is the work of marketing and advertising, that's very important to get the word out. There's the physical infrastructure, and here, this is an important clarification, physical infrastructure is very important to tourism, but the types of things that we're talking about are also town resources. So police services are important to tourism, but tourism does not run the police organization. Lighting is very important to tourism, but it, we're not talking about managing lighting, but these things, identifying these things as part of the strategy is very critical to tourism, so that's why I have strategy only in terms of physical infrastructure. The next is visitor services. Visitor services, and I'll talk about this a little bit more, but I think our committee is very committed to visitor services that function of some sort. So while there, I think there's concern that, you know, visitor services would go away, and that we wouldn't need them, I think we're all believe that you have to have a frontline interface to the visitors that are coming into the town, both as a concierge service, but as a way to navigate the resources that we have here. Research and analytics, this is very critical, and it's a separate function than the others for a couple of different reasons. It is a discipline, it's something that you have to know how to do, and you have to and you have to also do it objectively. So it doesn't always go right with the marketing and advertising because you sometimes want to split those because you have a conflict of interest between the two. So we're going to look at that as a separate function. And the last function is partner liaison. So what some don't realize is a lot of the work of tourism is really working with all of the resources here and understanding and being able to highlight them. So that's all the businesses. And then also the other partners, like the Virginia Tourism Commission and the other regional tourism organizations, plus those who are coming in from other areas that want to, to use these services. So partner liaison is a very important part. And it's beyond the, just the visitor services that are, you know, kind of the frontline. This is an ongoing relationship building type of function that you have to have in tourism. Any questions about that so far? Okay. So potential metrics. This again requires involvement from both the town council and the county board of supervisors in, in understanding what it is that they are holding people accountable for. So I have listed some potential metrics from the different research that we did. And it, it, it's just a conversation you have to have in terms of what are we looking for? What is the, what are some benchmarks? What is our baseline? What are we asking people to improve upon? So one of, one of them, and it's a broader one, is achievement of an annual or business marketing plan. So what is that marketing plan? Holding people accountable for a marketing plan and wanting to see the achievement of those goals on the marketing plan. The second is growth in lodging tax. And lodging tax, again, when someone comes and uses, you know, stays at a hotel, they are paying a tax, 60% and 70%, 70% in the town of that lodging tax goes into tourism. So you want to see a growth in lodging tax if you want to see a growth in tourism. So you would want to baseline that and see an improvement in that. Growth in meals tax. Meals tax is a very large number in the county and the town. And it actually supports the, the general fund, but it is driven significantly by tourism. So you'd want to also baseline the meals tax and see where you were and where you're going to and account some of that for, for the tourism. Another one, a recommended one, is park service visitors attendance in the Front Royal. It's just an objective one you can take a look at to see if you have an increase in tourism. Earned media is an important one. And earned media is not media that you buy, you purchase, but media that people are picking up on the great things that you're doing. So if the Washington Post writes a great article about all the great things in Front Royal or travel, travel writers write about what we're doing or, or other entities write about, you know, the 10 best places to go on the East Coast for a weekend vacation. That's earned media and you, it can be measured and it's something that we should focus on. Website, mobile and social analytics, we talked about that. Very important to baseline, look at Google Analytics, look at your SEO, you look at your, your mobile analytics. We do look at those to some degree, but I don't think they're very visible from a leadership perspective. And I don't think that we're holding anybody accountable for a particular improvement from a baseline to a goal. Business survey, there have been business surveys done on and off, but again, very specifically as a metric for tourism. And then an increase in tourism-related business revenue. You can see that, you can look at those who are considered tourism companies, tourism businesses. There are different codes that, tax codes that companies have that they would be considered like restaurants and hotels and outdoor adventure type of places. And then you can look at their revenue and see if there's an increase in revenue, which means an increase in town revenue. Any questions about that before I get into the options? Okay. So one of the things that I volunteered to do was to do quite a bit of research and talk to many different tourism organizations throughout the country, look online at the tourism associations, really tried to learn a lot more about tourism than I knew before. And so there are a couple, there are so many different options out there, but I tried to summarize them in four main options. And some of them might surprise you or you might not have thought about all the different options structurally that you can have for tourism. I will go through this. You can see in this first option that the solid line is from the town. It can be from the county as well, so it's interchangeable. So where it says the town is leading here, it could be the county leads, just one or the other has to lead. I've chosen the town because that's the way it had been structured. But again, this works just the same way as if the, if the county took the lead. So in option one, this is an integrated town and county tourism department. So it's very similar to what we had before, except we are going to combine the budget. So that would be a little bit different. It would have a director of tourism. The money would come from whoever managed this function. So either the town or the county. But in this picture here, it would be the town manager, would have, or the town, town manager, would have a director of tourism, would be a town employee. They would, they would allocate those dollars to that town employee through the but, normal budgeting process. That a director of tourism would do the strategy planning, budgeting and partner liaison. And then the visitor center or visitor services and tourism staff would do those visitor services, the marketing, advertising, research and analytics. Very similar to what we have today, just a little bit more coordination with the, with the county. This, when we looked at this, a lot of places in Virginia of medium to smaller sizes have this structure. So an example is Franklin County, Virginia has a structure. Of course, we had the structure. It is a common Virginia type of structure. And if you think about the places in Virginia, there's a handful of places that are really tourist destinations. We are one of them. But of those, it's probably split of the tourist destinations who, who has the structure, but it is common in Virginia. Okay, do you want to go to the next one? Okay, the structural option two is outsource some of the functions. So exactly what we just talked about. But instead of the tourism staff and the tourism director doing all the work, you would take some more of the functions that might, might take a little bit, a little bit more professional sophistication. And I don't mean that in a bad way because you certainly can have very sophisticated professionals in a town structure or in a county structure, but really a group that's just focused on this function and not focused on other things. And that would be for marketing and advertising and research and analytics. Again, keeping the research and analytics a little bit separate, you know, a wall between that and the marketing and advertising. But it's, this is really to up the game and keep very current on that side. And this is also a very common structure. Winchester actually has a structure like this. Many places in the state have a structure where they contract out some of the, some of the functions, particularly marketing and advertising. We do a little bit of contracting out in the town, but not as much as some of the other jurisdictions. We do some for things like print and we, we do some for, for the web development, but not the web management. So we do a little bit of it. Okay. All right, the next is a fully contracted out. And I know that this has been thrown around a little bit, but there are a lot of options here. So the fully contracted out is where you, you would have, in this case, the 3A, is you would have the controlling entity, in this case would be the town manager, would have a contractor, just like you have a contractor for anything else. And you would contract it out to a tourism corporation, a marketing company or a chamber of commerce. So this is a very common thing, particularly outside of the state of Virginia, very common for tourist destinations in particular of all sizes. And the idea here is that this contractor would be held accountable like any other contractor for performance guarantees. They would have a contract. They would report to you. You would be involved in the planning, but they are, they're fully accountable and fully accountable for a return on investment. In this picture, we have the joint tourism committee actually playing the same role as before, as an oversight role. They would participate in the strategy and the planning, budgeting and oversight and partner liaison of that contractor to say, is that contractor really providing us a return on investment? Some examples of this are Bath County, Virginia is a great example of this. They use a private marketing, marketing organization to do their entire tourism function. And there are many others throughout the country, but I used that one because it might be familiar to people. So we go to our next one. And this is the same model. However, you now move the, the committee, and you see I changed the, the word to board. You make it a board. And so that way, the money is actually coming through the board. So the board is funded by the town and the county with oversight from both. That board then provides the dollars to the contractor. And that contractor would be a tourism committee, again, a marketing organization, chamber of commerce or something like that. And the idea there is that they are managing, they have fiscal oversight in management of that group. And again, this is an extremely common model, particularly, and even common in Virginia with places like Fairfax County. If you think of someplace like Asheville, North Carolina, which is similar to us in the assets, they use a convention visitors bureau. And one that I mentioned, Sedona, Arizona, uses a chamber of commerce. So a very similar to us in terms of their assets, not so much Fairfax, but the other two. And they use this pretty well. The interesting thing about this, I actually called and spent a couple of hours actually on the phone. They were very gracious in Sedona, Arizona. So you might know Sedona seems like a very, you know, familiar tourist destination. They have, it's mostly, their number one activity there is hiking, so not dissimilar to us. They are actually surprisingly much smaller than us, much more well-known than us, but much smaller than us in terms of their total population. They use a chamber of commerce there. And the reason they do that is because many of the businesses that are opening there are opening for tourism because it's, tourism is their number one industry there and they get a lot of leverage from that. So that is an option. We, we are not as tourist oriented as they are. We have that potential, but that's the way they decided to structure there. Asheville, very similarly, is, is tourist, very tourist-driven and they do it through a convention visitors bureau and also a way to do that. Okay, any questions about that? Okay. The last one that I'm putting in here, and again, you could run this through the town manager, you can run it through the county administrator, you can run it through the board. But what this is, is taking the dollars and having a general vision in terms of what you're trying to do and then having grant recipients. So in this case, you would say, what we care about in Front Royal and Warren County is we want to attract this kind of tourists. We want to, we want to do it through video. We want to do it through these kind of festivals. And then we would let kind of all comers bid, you know, to, or, or to bid to be a grant recipient. So you can then get a grant and then you can perform these services. So this is not, this is very similar to the Virginia Tourism Commission. It's, we would be a microcosm of something like that. So in this case, you don't have necessarily, you could, again, you could have all different models. But the one I'm showing here, you wouldn't have a director of tourism. You potentially could have a visitor center, but it might be through a grant recipient. You would have, you know, individuals doing videos, individuals doing festivals, and you would provide them pretty large grants to do that. Obviously, the, the watch out here would be to make sure everybody's moving in the right direction. But these do exist. This is probably the least common, but it is not that uncommon. An example would be Frederick County, Maryland. They have a Main Street Communities Cooperative Fund that, that does just this. And again, you could take this model and combine it with other models or draw the lines a little bit differently. But the idea here is that you would have grant recipients, which is, and performance guarantees with those grant recipients. Any questions about that? Okay, so if you were to select anything with an outsourcing option, when, when you look through those things, the best practices really are not to do it just to award it to whomever you want to award it to. It's really to do it in a very open and competitive way. So I mentioned that I had spoken to Sedona, Arizona. In particular, the, the president of the tourism organization there had said, you really want to make it from, from her back. You want to make this open and competitive. And the reason, so that everybody can see the transparency here, that the best organization is really running your tourism function because it's so important, that it's multi-source, that you're, it's not a sole source thing where you're giving it to one organization. You might find that only one or two organizations really have these, that, you know, the ability to pull this off. It, it's important that you open it up to multiple organizations, that you have an objective evaluation, that you have criteria and that you have, you're going to use that criteria and look objectively and award it to who you want, who, who would best meet that criteria. When I talked to not just Sedona, but others, they recommended a one-year renewable, measurable and enforceable contract. I looked at best practices here. The contracts went from anywhere from one year to five years. But when you start out as an average, there were some that were even longer than that. But when you start out, it was recommended that you do this for one year so you can see in which direction you're going and whether that organization is really doing what you thought they would do. You'd have full transparency on financials. So for instance, if you were to use a chamber of commerce or you're to use an organization that has other clients, that they would have firewall between their, their work, let's say the chamber work and the work that you would be doing for tourism. So they need to be very separate because lodging dollars are going in. You don't want them, you want to see exactly that they're going to tourism and not to something else like, like other chamber functions or other clients of a marketing organization or other work of a commission. So it's important to do that. They've done this through separate bank accounts or through kind of a firewall on your QuickBooks. But it's really important, a lot of people have talked about keeping those separate. You would have a yearly planning with town and county officials together to make sure that everyone is moving in the right direction. And then you would have quarterly and yearly reporting against plan and predefined metrics, which again, is, is something that needs to be increased no matter which option that we go with. Okay, and really the last page before we open it up to a broader discussion. What needs to happen next is that the council and the board of supervisors determine the structural option that works best for them. So again, this is not the work of the committee to decide how you want to have this function led, though we can absolutely support it depending on which way you go. It's really to think about what works best for you and what you're willing to sign up for in terms of managing this. Different, I, for me, as an organization- Different, for me, as an organizational design expert, I always had told my clients in the past that really, any of these best practice options work. You just have to mitigate against the downside of them. So for instance, if you had a commission that's outside of your hands, you got to make sure you have those checks and balances in place to see, you know, the transparency of the financials and to hold people accountable. So any of them, we don't have a particular option that we are recommending here. You just have to decide and decide what you're willing to do from a leadership perspective. You need to design the roles and ensure the best fit. So if you remember those functions that we looked at, some of those functions are better with one role than another role. So job design is really critical. You don't want everybody doing everything, because you get less accountability. You want them to have very specific jobs. So job design is very critical in this process. You want to hire for any own roles. You want to look at the resources that you have, decide if they're a best fit. And that really is not, you know, that try to use the resources that you have first. Sometimes they are your best fit, sometimes they're not your best fit. You have to work through that. If any outsourcing is selected, you need to develop a request for proposal, look at the functions, the metrics, the criteria, make that just like you would any other contractor. You'd select the contractor or the contracted functions, if you're going in that direction. You'd communicate the organization, including, you know, how the decisions were made to ensure complete transparency. And if the tourism committee shifts to a board with fiscal accountability, you really need to take a look at the committee that we have, because that committee was an advisory committee. Maybe not everyone would want to sign up for that, and you might want to restructure it. But also, you would need to restructure it legally and financially as well, to make it a board with fiscal accountability. So that really is the presentation that we put together. What we really want to say is that this really needs to be addressed. Tourism is so, so critical for us. It's one of our largest industries, as you can imagine. If, you know, if you're in Detroit and the car industry is hurting, and you don't have leadership there, you need to get all over that and support that. Here, tourism is a very big industry for us, if not one of the largest, if not the largest. We need to get all over that and to support it, and get the leadership in place. And particularly now, when we have this great opportunity to bring responsible tourism into this area after we move through this pandemic, we need to have the leadership in place and the structure and the plans in place to make this work. So that's all we really had for you today, but I'm happy to open it up for discussion. And I encourage you to have lots of discussion with your group and make some decisions pretty quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnhart. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask Ms. Barnhart a question?
Sure.
Ms. Barnhart, I hate to put you on the spot, but I am going to ask, in a perfect world, what would you select if you had, if you had the responsibility of choosing?
You know, thank you, thank you. And I, you know, I don't mind taking any questions, because that's what we prepared to do. But really, honestly, anyone could work. I don't, honestly, do not have a particular way that I would do this. The option two and the option three, you know, I think, you know, kind of moves to the best of both worlds. But really, any of the options, all four of the options, and I honestly mean that, can work. And you just have to design around them and to design around the, and mitigate against the bad things that could happen if you don't lead it well. So.
Thank you. One other thing, so you've done a lot of research in different areas. And did you, I know you said that option number four was the least common. Did you feel that there was one of these options that you saw more people were using this with success than another?
You know, that's really hard, because every, every, you know, area is very different, and every leadership style is very different. But when you looked at, it was interesting, because when I first looked at this, I was kind of against any outsourcing. So when I looked at, you know, I thought option two would be a pretty decent option for us. You know, we could bring in the resources that we needed to and keep things in the town. But when I looked at, and I'm being very honest here, because I know this is a very hot topic and controversial topic. But when, I was surprised to find out that a lot of areas that, like Sedona, and even Denver, and again, Sedona is smaller than we are, so a lot of people think that's a huge place, but they only have about 10,000 residents. And Moab, which even has less residents than that, Moab, Utah, that a lot of people know, they did use things like commission, like tourism commissions. They did use things like chambers of commerce, which I was a little against both of those ideas. They used less probably marketing organizations, but they did use structures that were kind of significant and were very dedicated to those, to tourism, and very visible as well. So I was surprised to see that. And more popular, the tourist destination, and the more that they invested in tourism, the more that they had kind of a third party involved in some way. But it's not to say that there weren't really successful organizations that had it run through the town, or their county, or that had part of it outsourced and had the other part in source. They do exist.
Thank you. And then one last question. I know you said the presentation at the bottom, it said, please do not distribute. I was just wondering, are you, will, are you going to be able to share that with us so that we could go back and look at it, like maybe email it to us?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, Matt, that's fine. We can, that's fine to have this presentation, and it could be, certainly be public. There's nothing proprietary about it at all.
Okay, thank you. Thanks a lot for all the work you put into that, too.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Yes, Ms. Barnhart, this is Jake. First, I wanted to say thank you very much. Very well-done presentation, it was very clear. And I think that I really liked how you broke down particularly the different roles of tourism and the importance of aligning it appropriately, even getting down to the analytic side of it, how you've broken out the marketing. I think it's been, it was really important. So my question is, is all those different options have breakout, or have, I'm sorry, all those different options beg the question of the appropriate structure of oversight and the accountability of the structure that's set up, which I think you touched on. So two questions I have is, did you get any sense of, the problems aren't the right word, but any sense of the difficulties in particular structures that were set up where somebody might have said, hey, we tried this once and realized that, you know, we had a difficult time with accountability, because, you know, this is governed by, you know, essentially a board and, you know, county and town, for instance. So you have three factions competing for, let's just say, the desired outcomes that made it impossible. So that's my first question. And the second question is, any one of these options spend that $400,000 better than the other? You made a comment that $400,000 doesn't go very far, but I think depending on how you structure this, you could also probably eat up that money fairly quick. So sorry, just wanted to put out two questions at once.
Yeah, those are great. So on your first question, in terms of the, kind of the town and county, or city and county, leadership, you know, kind of issues that they might have. Interestingly, that issue, every place I talked to had that struggle, had that kind of tension between their town and the county, or the city and the county. And it's something that they had to work through. And so it is, requires an extensive amount of discussion between the two. The areas that I looked at, mostly, they did have combined resources, or one just, you know, took the lead on everything, and the other was kind of a silent partner, but funded it, you know, to some degree. But it required, everybody talked about that, and it's just something that has to be worked through. What I did not see, which is what we have here, is where you have, you know, equal amounts of budget, you have the branding. And again, I looked at best practices, so I'm sure that they're out there, but obviously they're not best practices, but where you have two that are separate. The areas that I looked at have a lot more money than us. Some are a lot smaller than us, successful in growing their tourism, because they have a lot more money than us, because it comes from their lodging. So they have more rooms than we do, and their decisions are big decisions. And so they have the ability, you know, they're in the millions of dollars in some cases. I did look at some smaller cases where they are considered best practice, but had, you know, less money, and they have all different, you know, structural options as well. So money did not drive the structural option. Really, desire of tourism outcome drove the structural option. But all of them had those issues, all of them talked about that, and all of them actually even talked about, the ones who are outsourced talked about kind of the public scrutiny of who they outsource to. And so the transparency was incredibly critical to all of those who outsource, because it is tax dollars that are going to those, you know, corporations, or those commissions, or those chambers of commerce, or whoever are running that. So the more transparent you could be, the better. So that, there was a lot of discussion about that. But they worked through those issues, and they're best practices, and even more specific best practices about actually how to handle those things. So for instance, some of them actually handed me contracts, and handed me, you know, job descriptions, and handed me organizational structures, and, you know, agreements between town and city, because they have worked through these. So those things are out there and are available for us to tap if we are interested in one structure versus another structure. So that's, I think that's your first question. Your second question, again, I forgot about your second question.
You kind of started to touch on it, actually. It was just if you had a allotted amount of money, in this case, it was the $400,000, do any of these particular structures prove to be more advantageous with a limited amount of money? We don't have a million dollars. So, you know, creating the right structure, that we don't spend all those dollars and just creating the structure, we don't have any money for marketing, as an example. Does that make sense?
Yes. So that's a great question, because the, the structure was not really, it's really interesting that Virginia has a lot of government structures on this, and that's not true of other places. But the structure, the size of, or the amount of money that, that organizations or jurisdictions spend was not, did not really connect or relate to the structure that they chose. It's really more that what they were trying to do with their tourism. And some of these best practices obviously have larger number of hotel rooms, but the smaller ones even had different structures. And it's just depending on how committed to tourism they were and how involved they were. So they tended to have, you know, outsourced or committee type of things when they were more committed to the tourism. That's not across the board, again, because there are some smaller ones that had great tourism organizations that were right from the government, government run. But the more committed they were, the more they wanted to do with it, the more professional they got in terms of tapping other resources, if that makes sense.
It does. Thank you very much. Those were my questions. And again, thank you for all the time that you put into this. Please express our gratitude to the Joint Tourism Committee for all the work and the due diligence that they've done, putting together this presentation.
Thank you.
Hi, Carrie, it's Tasha.
Hi, Tash.
Hey, I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. We had talked way back before, I guess, we went to lockdown. And it was just nice seeing everything put together, especially the structures and how those work. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Latasha.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor, Bill Seelock. Carrie, thanks for this presentation. I had some concerns, but I was really intrigued with the outsourcing of a marketing. We do it with the Front Royal Credit Union, and we've been doing it for two years and have been very successful. And it's actually not a high-cost item in our budget. I just throw that out there for your information, because they have, they are working us through our shortfalls in this pandemic, and what's the best way to market our loaning and income for the period thereafter. And that marketing skill definitely was there. And like I said, it did not cost us a large amount in our budget. We hired a firm out of Ohio, and there are plenty of them out there that do tourism as well. But I was really concerned with the digital market. So I was glad to see that in your presentation. Thank you.
Yes, so I would like to actually say something. You reminded me of something important on the marketing. So on the day-to-day marketing, it is important that someone who is very connected to your town can produce and connect to that content. So you can't really outsource the entirety of marketing, because they're not here, they're not living here, they don't know what's important to people, they don't see it in a way, they can't context it in a way. So you do have to have individuals who are based here. But it doesn't mean that you have to have individuals do the marketing, design marketing campaigns, and look at analytics, and, you know, structure things that are here. You just have to make sure you have both. If you're going to outsource marketing, don't outsource all the marketing, because content is very, it has to be authentic. It has to speak to the area where you are. And it's very clear when you have, let's say, you know, not that we could afford this, but a high-priced advertising agency doing your marketing, you very quickly realize, no, that's really kind of fake destination. And then one of the most important things to tourists, if you, if you do some research on tourism, is to go to someplace where they can get an authentic feel of that area. So it's, again, it's important, and that they're, that they feel like they are, that they live here, that they got that, you know, feel of what it's like to be here all the time. So if you think of yourself, if you go to another place, or if you, you know, another town, or another county, or you like to go to Europe even, you don't want to get the plastic tourism feel, you want to get the authentic one. So content is very tricky, and that you got to keep some of it very close, and the other, the engine behind it, you can keep it, you know, more of a marketing organization.
Anyone else need to ask any questions? Ms. Barnhart, thank you for your presentation. I thought it was very well put together, and I enjoyed it. And Matt, if you could get us all either a copy of that, so we could all review it and have a second look at it, if you could do that for us, please?
We'd be happy to. Ms. Barnhart, would it be possible for you to delete the bottom portion that says, please do not disseminate, distribute?
Yep, I can do that.
And just send a clean version, and I'll get it to council.
Yep, I can do that. And I appreciate being able to come and talk on the topic again. It's, it's very important to me and to the committee. All of us spend many hours talking about this, and it's great to be able to have this discussion and present our thoughts and our findings. Yeah.
Thank you, once again.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could add to what Ms. Barnhart just said, just so you know, it's my understanding, she's planning to brief the Board of Supervisors tomorrow at 6:00 PM, the same presentation, or some variation of it, I take it, or the same one. And so I just, you know, we thought we'd go ahead and And, um, so I just, you know, we thought we'd go ahead and get our presentation tonight since we have this work session.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, we'll go to our next item this evening, number three, review of FY20 revenue. Uh, head over to Matthew or BJ.
Yes, sir, thank you. One moment, let me get, thank you, Ms. Barnhart. Um, if I can get control tied, let's see. I'll pull it up. There you go, sir.
I got it.
Okay, um, Mr. Mayor, members of council, you have in your packet, um, some key revenue data. Um, uh, Mr. Wilson, I believe, is online. Should you have any questions about the information? But we thought we'd go ahead and provide this considering, um, COVID-19 and the impact it's had on our community. Um, uh, Mr. Wilson has been out for a couple of days on medical leave. But, um, prior to, um, prior to, um, his leave, uh, we did have a rather thorough discussion effort. We've been meeting probably two, three times a week on the revenues. And you'll see that, um, you know, all in all, it was, it was an extremely wise decision for the town council to take the move and allocate as much money into the contingency fund as early as we did. Um, as of the end of April, um, we still have, um, in the general fund, approximately $587,644,000 to, uh, that we could spend should we need it. Um, and each account has their own numbers in it. I can review those numbers. I assume the one thing you did want to go over is the sewer fund in particular because that was, um, highlighted as, as a loss of $430,000. Um, um, it was a little bit higher than, um, than we thought it would be, but it's, it's not overly concerning. The biggest impact is the reduction in sewer connection fees, uh, was rather significant. And the sewer sales, um, combined is $686,000 of a loss. Um, there's a lot of money that's just not hitting the budget just yet. Um, and, and, um, and that justifies why, you know, we're looking for a rate increase, a slight rate increase for the sewer fund, uh, next year. But might be better, you've had this information in your packet. I think it's broken down, um, as simple as I think we can make it and happy to, uh, ask any or answer any questions you might have.
Uh, Matt, if I could add something to that real quick?
Sure.
Uh, just so council is aware, I mean, uh, the, the figures that are presented are, are showing above or below budget. Um, you know, uh, just like in electric sales, uh, the winter time is, uh, higher electric sales uh, than the, you know, uh, April or, uh, beginning of May usually. Uh, same with water and sewer. So water and sewer are entering their busier months, you know, uh, uh, citizens will be filling their pools, watering their lawns. Well, maybe not with the amount of rain we've gotten recently, but, um, so sewer will recover a little bit. It may not recover totally, uh, especially from the connection fees. But I do anticipate that it will recover somewhat going into June 30th.
BJ, is there seasonality built into the budget or is it straight line?
Uh, this is just straight line. Um, I, I do look at it, uh, uh, for seasonality, obviously, just like I was mentioning, uh, mentioning there. But this is just straight line. Um, sewer, um, likely we can, we can anticipate maybe a hundred, $150,000 recovery, uh, on the sewer side, but it, um, most likely it will end up taking a loss.
Uh, BJ, going back to the electrical and water and sewer fund, uh, when we are not, uh, being able to cut people off, what kind of ratio do we have on people that are behind in their, uh, bills at this time? What kind of percentage?
Um, the, uh, percentage wise, uh, Matt and I looked at this a couple of weeks ago and I did not remember it off the top of my head. Um, the, uh, um, I know it has, uh, it has, it has increased. Um, but what it's amounting to is, is the, uh, um, the accounts that we're not paying before are, are not paying now. And then they're, they're escalating. Those that we're paying are continuing to pay. Uh, but, um, we've, uh, we've definitely seen an increase. The amount, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I can certainly provide that.
Well, BJ, the question that really is more electrical than any other, uh, since our bills are not being paid, are we going to run into a deficit and pay in Ample Ohio for the amount of power we purchase?
Um, at this point, we will not. Um, um, you know, hopefully we'll be able to, uh, resume disconnections, uh, here in, here in the future. Not exactly sure when that will be, but, um, um, the, uh, I do anticipate that we will be able to collect that money. Um, you know, some of it, not all of it, uh, some of the, some of the accounts will probably, unfortunately, you know, just up and leave, um, and they'll be hard to track down. But, uh, we'll, you know, do our best through our collection agencies. Um, but, um, uh, but, uh, others will, will be making payment plans, uh, to help them recover. Um, it's going to be a slow process, but, um, I don't have the, the figures as to exactly that, what that is off the top of my head, but I can certainly provide that for next go around.
Uh, going back to the payment plan, uh, Matt, I don't know, uh, what you're all doing as far as putting that out to the public, but we ought to try to advertise it some way that they, everybody gets, are behind, can set up some type of a payment, uh, plan to get them back on track, uh, then two or three months if possible.
Yeah, I, I would disagree with that, Mr. Mayor. I was going to, uh, have a conversation with BJ, BJ, when he gets back, back in the, in the office, back to work. Um, my, my thought would be, um, unless I hear any strong objections from council, my thought would be to go ahead and restart the, uh, the disconnects July 1st and start advertising immediately and give everyone time and inform them what their options are, et cetera. But I, I think we need to put, draw a line in the sand and just select a date, um, as far as when. Because I, it's my impression that there's a lot of, you know, there, there are people out there who are suffering for sure, but I also think there's people out there who could be paying their bills and are not. And so I just think we just have to get to the point of picking a date and, um, and working from there. I mean, it's not free. I mean, we pay for it. Every taxpayer is paying for these services. And whether it's, whether they're paying the bill or not, it's got to be paid by us. So we've got to pay Ample Ohio and to provide electricity as an example.
Yeah, I agree. I think we need to set, need to set a date to cut this off and then we can proceed, you know, whatever we have to do in the future. Any other questions on this?
Yes, BJ, um, so from the, where we're below our, our budget or where the deficits are, um, I understand what you're saying about the electric sales because we just came off a winter and water and pool and people, you know, those types of things, watering lawns and stuff. But are you saying that the, the areas which we are, um, below our, uh, don't have the money coming in that we thought? Are we saying that this is all relative to the pandemic?
Um, it's not all, uh, all relative to the pandemic. Um, majority of it is, I, I would anticipate the connection fees in particular, uh, when it comes to water and sewer. Uh, as far as the, um, uh, the sewer usage, uh, some of it is just weather related, you know? Um, it's, uh, when we're predicting the budget, we're doing it a year in advance. And a lot of what we do, uh, is based on the weather, you know? If it's a, if there's a drought, um, citizens are watering their lawns more. If it's cold outside, people are using more electric to eat, uh, you know, heat their houses. So it's, um, it's not entirely related to the pandemic. Um, but the, uh, the connection fees, I do feel that that is, uh, is solely related to the pandemic.
Okay. I, I was just thinking like street, street construction and maintenance. For the life of me, I was not understanding how, um, that could be related to the pandemic, but maybe I don't understand.
No, the, uh, the street, uh, and the street and, uh, VDOT maintenance, um, that's just, uh, showing you what it's, uh, what it's, uh, below budget. Um, we, um, we forecast, again, we're going, you know, when we're doing the revenues, we're doing them a year out. Uh, the $36,000 there is actually, um, it's a small percentage of the street fund. Um, we're just trying to predict the, uh, the VDOT revenue. And this, this is just giving council a, a general guideline of, as to where we're at. Uh, we're never going to hit the budget, budget marks exactly, but I do like to fall within, um, within a 5% ratio is, is generally what I go for.
Okay.
With the streets, we're still within that 5%.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, just a quick clarifying question. So if I'm reading this correctly, um, let's just use the general fund as an example. Um, we had a loss, but there was a contingency there, 624,000. So after the loss and contingency, there's 587,000. If I'm reading correct, I'm reading it right, uh, like in my head, does that mean that there's 587,000 left in our contingency? So if we continue to go, uh, continue to have negative months, then that's what we're going to eat up out of the contingency fund?
That's correct.
Exactly.
Okay, so some of these, then, um, for instance, like the water and the water contingency, so that means that in one month, we ate through almost all that contingency and only have an 183,000 left.
Well, and again, the, um, it's not, uh, that's not all one month. That's, uh, where we're standing for the year-to-date. So that's, that's year-to-date figures. So it's not all just one month. And, uh, as well with that, we're going into the busier seasons for water. So water will start to recover as well. Um, so we'll start seeing that, we should start to see that number, uh, go up, um, as the warmer weather comes.
Okay.
BJ, I had a quick question. So if we put, if we draw the line in the sand and we said that July 1st is the day that we resume normal operations, I suppose you could say, um, would we then, I would think we would advertise and say that everybody needs to make a payment arrangement or pay their bills ahead of July 1st?
Most definitely. So, uh, what, what I would anticipate is, is, uh, of course, we'll do a normal public notice. Uh, we can also do an insert in the utility bills. And then as well, it'll be on the delinquent notices, uh, when we send those out. So, uh, citizens will, uh, receive, um, a delinquent notice with the shut-off date on there. The delinquent notices we're sending out currently, uh, do not have a shut-off date on it nor that do they have late fees or penalties assessed on them. So we would resume that and there would be ample time, uh, before disconnection actually occurred.
All right, and just so everybody can hear it on the call, um, what is the best phone number to call if somebody does need to make a payment arrangement?
Sure, most certainly, uh, the Department of Finance, 540-635-7799. Um, any of the, uh, employees that answer the phone on that number, uh, are, uh, able to assist with payment arrangements.
All right, excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Mayor, thank you, BJ, and...
Right.
No, I'm sorry.
Next item tonight is item number four, uh, removal of credit card fees. Um, could we have the summary on that read because that's very vague?
The town has waived fees for citizens using a credit card until June 30th, 2020 due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Permanent removal of the credit card fees will require an ordinance amendment for the town of Front Royal and will, will require the town to absorb an estimated amount of $240,000 in the FY21 budget. $240,000 could be taken from contingency amounts that are planned to accompany the adoption of the FY21 budget. Town code section 12-3 would need to be amended as follows if council would like to move forward with removal of the credit card fees. And 12-3 reads, um, finance fees, section A, fee for return check. If any check or other means of payment tendered to the town in the course of its duties is not paid by the financial institution on which it is drawn because of insufficient funds in the account of the drawer, no account is in the name of the drawer or the account of the drawer is closed and the check or other means of payment is returned to the town unpaid, the amount thereof shall be charged to the person on whose account it was received and his liability and that of his surety shall be as if he had, he never offered any such payment. A penalty of $35 or the amount of any cost whichever is greater shall be added to such amount and said penalty shall be in addition to any other penalty provided by law. There is hereby added to any amount due to the town, a fee of 2.35% when payment of such amount is tendered by either credit card or debit card or any other means of payment by which the town incurs a charge and that last sentence would be removed.
Thank you. BJ, Matt, or whatever.
No, yes, sir. Uh, it's just as it states there, we're waiving the fees currently. Um, we're reckon, you know, we're recommending at this point to go ahead and waive them for fiscal year 21 and we will find, uh, take the money out of the contingency monies that we shifted. Uh, we just think by having the online service, it's going to reduce the amount of, uh, people into the lobby as well as the drive-through. We've seen an increase and I don't have the exact numbers. BJ, you might know them off the top of your head, but we have, uh, seen an increase of about 500 people, uh, paying online since we waived the fee.
Uh, yes, that's correct. I don't remember the, uh, the percentage increase that is. I want to say it was, uh, uh, nearly a 30% increase just in the online payment amount. Um, but, uh, yes, there's been a, a, a huge increase in the, in the number of online payments we've received in the last month. Um, I don't know that it's necessarily related to the waiver of the credit card fees. It could be, um, you know, a lot of it is obviously the pandemic. Um, but if we would like to continue, uh, down this road, this is, uh, something that we'll have to, uh, take care of as, uh, updating this one.
Any comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I know that we brought this up before. I don't think there is a solution, but I certainly want to mention again that I wish there was a way we could figure out to do online payments through like your bank versus using, um, a credit card. Um, I, I think a per, I think the fee that we have been charging is really not that unlike other places when you use a credit card. Um, they charge a fee. I know my daughter's rent payment is, you know, in her college town, charges a fee, a percentage. They certainly have not waived it during the pandemic. Um, but I just wish there was a way we could figure out so that the citizens could pay their electric bill, um, through maybe their online bill pay where it just goes from their bank to our accounts. Uh, and no, you know, credit card company involved at all. I, I just, I really wish that we had the ability to do that. I think a lot of people would use it and it wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't cost us. Um, it wouldn't cost the town, uh, it wouldn't, wouldn't cost, uh, uh, an expense to the town.
The, um, we have, uh, many citizens that already use the online bill pay. It's a service that's offered, uh, by their banks. Uh, we receive, uh, online payments, uh, through that, um, daily, but it's not a service that the town provides. That's, that's a service that the, um, banks provide. Um, but we do receive those, uh, uh, on a daily basis.
Hmm. And they could also set up, uh, uh, they can also set up to have an auto bank draft, right?
Yes, yes, we already have that available. Um, and, uh, you know, so, um, we have quite a few citizens that do take advantage of that.
I, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Wilson, because I, I know myself, that's what I do, the auto draft. Um, you know, the only other thing that I might add to this conversation is that maybe we could somehow do, maybe we could advertise or encourage, you know, when we send out the electric bills, maybe add a paragraph in there about, here are other ways that you can pay your electric bill other than through a credit card. Um, maybe people just aren't aware of the other options and how it would save them money, which would also save us money.
Um, we have sent that out in the past, but we can certainly revisit it. Uh, that's not a problem. We can certainly get that back out in the newsletter.
Thank you.
Why, why can't we just collect credit cards online for our portal? No, I'm just kidding, BJ, just kidding.
Please don't go down that road again.
So, so you're recommending that we don't charge any credit card fees, uh, the rest of this year, up until July the 1st, is what you're saying?
Um, that's already been implemented. Uh, we are not collecting credit card fees, uh, until, uh, up until June 30th. Uh, July 1st, we would resume. If we want to continue to waive credit card fees, this is the course of action that we need to be taking.
Yeah, I understand that, BJ, uh. Uh, would you need to know that? Uh, we need to bring that up for more discussion, I believe. I'm not sure it's a very good idea personally, but, uh, I don't know what the council agree to.
Um, if we're wanting... Um, if we want, if we want to have it effective July first, uh, we really need to move on this rather quickly. Uh, otherwise, uh, effective July first, we would have to implement collection of the credit card fees again. Just really making council aware of this, so it's, uh, council's decision if they'd like to move forward with it or not.
Thank you, BJ. Any other discussion?
Are we discussing it now, or are we waiting until it comes to a council meeting?
Uh, any way you all want to do it. I mean, uh, you agree to it? If you don't agree to it, then we don't have to discuss it.
So just for a point of clarification, um, what would happen is, is that we have to do an ordinance amendment, and ordinance amendments do require, uh, council to vote on it twice. So this would have to go to both meetings in June, and we would also have to advertise for it. Uh, so we would need, um, I'm not sure of the exact dates. Uh, Ms. Presley would have that information for advertising. So we would, I think we would need a, um, an answer, uh, would anticipate by the end of this week in order to, if we wanted to stop at July first.
BJ, where, where would we get the funds to pay the fees? Because we're still going to have to pay the fees.
And you're correct, uh, we would indeed have to pay the fees. The, um, uh, the recommendation, or not recommendation, but an option is, is that, um, when we adopt the fiscal year twenty-one budget, there's going to be a, um, budget amendment to accompany that, where we would put money into contingency funds. Uh, some of the contingency funds from each fund could be used to pay, um, the credit card fees. Uh, that's, uh, just an option, um, just something to throw out there. But, um, you know, we could look for other avenues as well.
Well, BJ, wouldn't it be better if we could really advertise that they can pay it through their bank drafts or their bank accounts? And maybe that'll cut down on these fees and, but I'd hate to see us lose two hundred and forty thousand in next year's budget because of this fee. I mean, that's kind of redundant to our budget, isn't it?
Yes, I agree. I mean, it's, um, uh, my office gets, uh, many requests from this by the citizens, and, uh, that's why we're pushing it up to council to, uh, uh, to review. Uh, yes, it is, it is, uh, counterproductive to our budget process, but, um, again, it's, uh, where do we want to draw that line?
I guess it's in your hands, council, and decide on what y'all want to do.
So here's the thing, like, no matter what business uses credit cards to, um, or accepts credit cards as a payment, they all pay that fee. So you, you have one or two choices. You either are transparent about that fee and you charge the two percent, three percent, the, the three percent fee, the transactional fee, that's what I was trying to think of, the transactional fee to the customer, which is what most people don't like, or you hide that fee in the cost of services that you're delivering, um, to them that they're paying for. Um, so in other words, you increase the rates or something along those lines to offset the credit card fee. So that's, that's what every business does. And so if we're not going to increase rates for the services that were provided, then I think we have to continue charging that fee, um, upfront, or giving them the free options of doing bank drafts. So, uh, you know, either way, somebody's paying that fee. It's going to be, it's going to be the customer.
Anyone else?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say that, um, I, I, I do not want to change it. I, um, I would leave it, um, to where it will run out, I guess, on July first. And, um, leave it the same.
I agree with Gary.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
I agree as well.
Fantastic.
I agree with you as well, Matt.
Yes, sir, we have direction. Thank you.
Okay. It's, it's the last thing on our agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to discuss this evening?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have, uh, one item to discuss. I wanted to ask, uh, town council if you wanted to have a work session, perhaps on the twenty-first, uh, this Thursday, to discuss the tourism presentation as well as, um, any other, uh, items for the FY twenty-one budget. We're getting very close to, um, the twenty-sixth. We're having our, our public hearing for the FY twenty-one budget. And I just wanted to afford council an opportunity to have another work session, should you deem it appropriate or necessary.
Is that going to give them enough time to read over and sort of digest that presentation this evening for Thursday night?
I don't know, Mr. Mayor. That's up to them.
I understand.
Mr. Tidrick and Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Mayor Tiwak, I just would like to say, depending on what time that you would be doing that on Thursday night, I just have a prior commitment, um, in my role as a teacher. We have, um, online things with our students, and Thursday night happens to be a night that I have that with my students. We pick a daytime, we pick a nighttime so that kids have access. So I, if I don't need to be there, I could certainly not be, but I just wanted to say that Thursday night is, Thursday night's more of a challenge. Wednesday night would be better for me, but I don't want everybody else on council to have to change their schedule based on my, uh, teaching role.
Anyone else got any comments?
Wednesday.
Uh, what time? Seven?
It works for me.
How about the rest of the council?
Mr. Mayor, Bill Seelock. I'm, I'm working at the golf course at seven o'clock every Wednesday night.
Are you the ball boy?
I thought the golf course was. That's not a good excuse, Bill.
You can pick up all the golf balls later. Wait till it gets dark.
I really believe that we need the whole council here available if we're going to discuss these tourism as well as the budget in general.
Mr. Mayor, uh, this is Jake. I pick a day, Wednesday or Thursday. I think they're both a little bit difficult for me, so I'm just going to try to figure out how to make it work.
I'm going to be Friday?
Definitely not Friday.
Lori, what, what time would you be available?
Right now, they currently do them at seven thirty, but I maybe could ask the students to do it at seven, and maybe I, I, I could be available at eight. I hate for people to be that late, but.
Would you be available earlier than that?
Not, not on Thursday. But again, I don't want, I mean, I could, you pick, if, if you want to do it at seven on Thursday, I will, maybe I can work with the teacher I work with and see if I, could, I mean, could I come late to the work session? I don't know. I'm not, I'm not familiar with the protocol here.
Well, the work session will be like we're doing this evening. Uh, we'll start at a certain time, and everybody can chime in when they get on, online. But, I mean, I just, I just think it's very important that we have pretty much the whole council, if we can get them to, together. But if Thursday night's the only available night, then I guess we'll just have set for Thursday, and who can be there will be there. If y'all want to, we can do it earlier than that, six thirty, or we can do it at seven, whichever way you guys want to do it.
I could probably swing six thirty, and depending on how long it goes, I could be there at six thirty and possibly show up late with my students.
Okay, would that be okay with the rest of you other than Bill?
Well, Bill works, I think he's, we're talking Thursday, so I believe Mr. Seelock was available on Thursday.
Right, you're right. Bill, is that all? Are you and the rest of the council?
Yes, I'll, I'll make it Wednesday or Thursday. I'll, I'll rearrange my schedule.
Okay, we're taking, we're talking about Thursday now, Bill.
I'm fine on Thursday.
Okay. What about the rest of? Here?
Thursday at, uh,
I'm good at thirty. I'm good.
Six thirty.
I'm good.
Okay.
Thursday, six thirty.
Okay, Matt, let's do it at six thirty then on Thursday.
Great, thank you.
Uh, make sure you get us some copies of that, uh, presentation, uh, prior to that.
Yeah, I should, I should be able to get it first thing in the morning to you, as soon as Ms. Barnhart gets it to me.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
She's just sent it to me.
Oh, good. Hi, Jake.
Uh, just a question, um, for Mr. T. Hey, any more discussion with some of the downtown businesses, um, around outside seating? I saw a few different fences, uh, around the side block and, um, I know I kind of went, uh, talked a little bit about it last week, and I was just curious if you got any kind of feedback about that? Um, if council can talk a little bit about how we can help support that.
Yeah, good, good point. Uh, we've discussed it, uh, numerous times. I have the, uh, procurement office officer ready to rent tents and tables and chairs to assist the business owners, um, if necessary, if we go that route. I've also talked to several business owners, and frankly, Nick signaled, I mean, shocker, right? Just some, some are, they don't want to close the street down. They want all the details as far as timing of it. So what I've, uh, what I've done is I've directed, um, uh, Tim Smith to send out a survey to, he's developing it, the question's tomorrow. We talked about it today. And we're going to send a survey out to the mainstream businesses and get it out immediately via email, social media, as well as in person, and see if we can't get some kind of consensus as far as what to do. I, I personally think it's a great idea. Um, I'm happy just to move forward and do it, but, um, you know, in light of, uh, of all the drama over the last several months, you know, I just want to, you know, try to build as much consensus as possible. It just takes time to build consensus.
Yeah, how do, how do we put it out there? Like, if, if council had the appetite to do it, for instance, how do we put it out there that says, hey, council is willing to do this, like, let's just take it to, to the empty green here. If we want to close Main Street, we'll help you with tents, we'll help you with tables, we'll help with outside seating, uh, help direct traffic down that direction, heaters, whatever. But we need a general consensus from the business owners that they want to do that, not something we're forcing. By, by, by no means we want to force it, but we want to show that we're being proactive with this. How are we able to put that message out there? And if they want to shoot it down, shoot it down, that's fine, but.
Yeah, the only way I know to do it is via email and, and survey. Um, I have a, we have a, uh, we have two email lists that have been recently deducked. And so we have what we think to be a pretty solid email list that we can send out an online survey and ask for a very quick turnaround, but my, I'm just guessing, I don't think you're going to get very high response rate.
Matt, um, the, the, uh, the negative responses that you've been getting, are any of them from any of the restaurants?
No.
Uh, I, I say, I say let's, let's move forward with it. I, I think those restaurants down on Main Street need that, um, especially right now. Uh, uh, they've been closed down long enough. I think anything we can do to help them out, we need to do it.
Chris, that was a good point. I didn't, I didn't think about that. But if the restaurants don't come back saying this is what they want, and they're not going to participate in, then that's just going to make us look kind of silly.
Yeah, I mean, but Matt's, Matt said that, uh, he hasn't got anything.
I, I have talked to three, I've talked to three restaurants that were very, very excited and amenable. As a matter of fact, where I bought my lunch today, um, actually said, thank you so much for thinking about that. We would really appreciate it.
Okay, so next steps, uh, you're going to survey Main Street essentially, to see if we can't, um, offer a little bit more support. And then, uh, depending on the response on that, we'll determine how we move forward. I think that was one of the reasons why we, or I'm sorry, one of the reasons why I, um, wanted to table the discussion on the, the, the grant, because I wanted to see what kind of response we could get if we spent money in this direction. But if they, if it comes back where nobody wanted any particular kind of movement around on this, then, then, um, I'd still like to open that discussion on the grant.
I understand. Now, one challenge, just to let you know, I actually did a, I walked Main Street, uh, one side down the other today, just to get a, uh, a slight visual. Uh, one particular challenge that we're going to have is if we close Main Street closer to Royal Avenue, where we typically close it, we're not going to be able to have cars pay bills in their, in the town hall drive-through. Which means we may have to shift the closure down to Church Street, closer to Church Street, so that cars can pay the drive-through and/or cars that don't follow the signs can turn down Church Street. So I mean, it, it, and then do you close, do you close twenty-four seven? Or do you close just in the evenings? Uh, do you close just in weekends? Those are all the little nuances that I've been working through with staff and trying to get feed, feedback from, um, from, uh, Main Street businesses. So any suggestions the citizens have as far as, um, ideas of, as far as how the closure could work? Or town council, if you talked to any businesses down there, I'm very open to put the plan and execute it.
You know, Matt, when I came downtown hall today, um, I think that's something we might have to do something about is, uh, drive-through, um, traffic was backed up all the way down Main Street. And I had, I, I thought at first somebody was just dropping some people off at one of the stores of one of the shops up ahead. They were all in line to actually go through the drive-through, so Main Street was backed all the way up, I mean, down through the other end, Chester Street. So I, I don't know, um, I think that's something else we're going to have to take a look at, um, if this continues, because that.
Yeah, the biggest concern there, the biggest problem is, um, is the lobbies closed this week.
Yeah.
Uh, something else with that is, is, uh, uh, once we're able to resume normal operations and the lobby's open, uh, we can, uh, filter the, uh, work orders and some other, um, some other paperwork that we're doing for the drive-through right now, back to the, uh, lobby. Currently, we're doing everything through the drive-through, so some of the transactions can take fifteen or twenty minutes, unfortunately.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Tidrick, I noticed that I believe the town of, um, Warrington has done something like what Mr. Mazur was suggesting. I don't know if any of the rest of the councilmen had heard about that. But I was just going to say, I wonder if they've worked through some of the challenges that we're talking about. I wonder, because I believe they already started it over this past weekend, like closing parts of their main street or their downtown for restaurants.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, I just didn't know if that was, you know, somebody that's kind of already worked through it might be able to see some of the challenges that we're talking about, maybe, I don't know. I didn't know if it was worth a call to them to see how they worked it out.
Yeah, I've actually, um, I've actually scheduled a, uh, or attempted to schedule a call with our town manager through, um, one of the other, uh, senior leaders in Warrington. I had a conversation, uh, Saturday before last with a senior leader. So I think that's a good idea, and I'm going to continue to pursue that.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Tidrick?
Yes, sir.
Uh, ca- councilman Mazur brought up a good, uh, point last week about, um, possibly being able to have regular sessions, um, again, in public. Um, you know, uh, I, I, I don't know how it's going to work for work sessions because we're a little cramped there at town hall as far as that. But has, have we put together anything as far as protocol? For being able to, um, have public meetings again? And, uh, and, and has anybody, um, you know, uh, brought the discussion up? I, this, this Webex, you know, it, it served the purpose, but to be honest with you, it's getting kind of old.
Yes, sir, I, I understand, appreciate that. Uh, under the current executive order sixty-one, we're still limited. We still have restrictions that are going to preclude town council from having the regular meetings until the governor releases some of those restrictions. And it's just, you know, for instance, ten or more, ten or more in a room, there's seven members of council, or six members of council plus the mayor, that's seven right there. By the time you have the press and you have, um, uh, staff, you're ceding the governor's executive order. Now, if council, you know, you do something, yeah.
Let's have it at the liquor store.
Exactly. Go to Royal.
Oh, I was live. I didn't mean to say that live.
And, and I, uh, I, I made that comment. I understood the executive order. I think that, um, I've received. And I, and I, uh, I, I made that comment. I understood the executive order. I think that, um, I've received feedback. Um, either through social media or emails directly that people don't like the fact that council has, is conducting online meetings. They want us to be out. And in the public, especially if we're going to make say, uh, statements along the lines of we want to reopen our businesses. I am happy to do that. Um, you know, I'm happy to come out in public. I'm happy to figure out ways to have the social distancing. But also understanding that, you know, if we, if we turn it into, um, you know, wide open to the public, it's going to create some logistic difficulties. Um, and having the right amount of, um, social distancing and precautions in place.
I think that's where we're at right now. I don't know how we social distance on the day, as just an example. I'd wish supervisors can do it because they have five members.
I want to apologize to, to everybody. I thought my mute button was on. Kind of being a wise guy at the alley. I'm truly sorry.
Um, uh, sorry, one more question going back to the, the Main Street. Matt, is it, is it possible for us just to say? Hey, what we're proposing is, um, helping to, um, expand our, our Main Street into a walking mall from. Twelve to midnight, um, or twelve to eleven, or whatever it is. Um, uh, seven days a week for the next, you know, month to get us through this. Um, you all want any yes or no, that kind of thing? And, and let's just limit what are, what we're, what we're focusing on and just say, here's what we're willing to do.
Yes, sir, we can do that.
I know you've probably already thought a thousand different ways about this. Um, and every time you say here, have you thought about this or you thought about that, it pours me because I'm like, geez.
No, it's not the case at all. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to, you know, I'm, I'm happy to, I'm happy to close Main Street. Uh, my, I would love to have Main Street closed for more of a weekend and have the restaurants out there on a nice sunny day and. Having a thriving, social distancing Main Street, both with merchandise and food and beverage.
So what do you think the turnaround would be in our response to this? You think like a couple of days or?
I'm, I'm shooting for, I'm shooting for a response by Thursday. We get it out tomorrow, response Thursday is my hope.
Okay, because I really don't want to, of course, hold back anything that we can be doing for the other businesses as well. Um, restaurants are at an advantage right now where they can. You know, open and have the outsourced seating, but then we also have the businesses who can't really open their doors right now still, so.
Yeah, the only ones, the only ones on Main Street that can't open their store, their doors would be the, uh. Movie theater and, um, well, not Main Street, but the, uh, any time, or the fitness, CrossFit. Fitness and I've, I've had conversations with the owner of the movie theater. And he's thrown out some creative ideas to use the gazebo and our, uh, gazebo flex, uh, projector and screen. Um, and I haven't received a feedback in a week on, on my offer, so I.
Yeah, it's a good offer. Um, I make sure that we were, we were looking at the money, so we have to know if we're renting tents or not renting tents. And then we know how much money we still have and how we would then split this amongst the businesses.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And the thought with the, the thought with the tents is, you know, make it more of a permanent, permanent situation. You know, twenty-four, seven and, um, and allow, allow any business to set up an area and just. Do their retail out under tents.
There you go.
Well, I mean, that's a very, it's very similar to what, uh, I think the pavement did, uh, in their back area, and I thought that was very nice.
So Matt, Matt, the only, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jake.
I was just going to say, I, I like, I like that idea of more of a weekend and, um, if we can't get something that's more permanent, then I think that, um. I think that'd be, you know, a really good idea to say, hey, we're going to take these two or three days and we're going to do this to help. Um, support tourism, people getting out in the town or front Royal, support these businesses. Um, let's make the investment on, on a, a weekend like that. I think it'd be great.
I agree. Yeah, I think we need to do something, uh, before the weekend.
Well, why don't I just go ahead and do it?
I, I'm all for it.
I'm for it.
Yeah, I'm for it. I say let's go ahead and do it. I mean, I, I don't want all the non-restaurant owners to come back, say no, and. And then you come back Thursday and say, well, we've got, you know, ten no's and six yeses and, you know.
Yeah.
Well, with the one caveat that if the restaurants don't want to do it and, you know, the bakery and everything else like that, if they don't want to do it.
They don't have to.
Point it, but then it would be a waste. But if they're all like, oh, heck yeah, we'll, we'll do it and, um, you know. Um, we'll participate, we'll serve out there, then it'd be great.
I, I'm all for it. I say let's do it.
Okay.
Mr. Tidrick, the businesses that are not restaurants that you've heard. Um, that the feedback you've gotten has not been positive, was there concern that if we closed Main Street? That their businesses couldn't be accessed because of parking on Main Street?
Yeah, parking on Main Street.
And how, and so if you're talking about moving it back to say Short Street or whatever. You know, like if you're saying you're moving it back to that, um, how many parking spaces are we talking about that we would lose? Because it's only going to be on one side of Main Street.
Yeah, it's only a handful.
Okay.
It's change. Some people don't like change.
Change is hard.
Change is hard.
It, this COVID virus is hard and that's a heck of a lot of change.
Yeah.
I don't disagree with you, Councilman Mesa. I was just, I'm just kind of being funny to the change is hard because. That's all we've all been having to do lately is change.
Yeah, exactly.
Sorry, I, that was.
No, no, I'm, I'm teasing back, Lori, teasing back.
Anything else? If not, this meeting is closed.